What is your motion, Councilman Mays?
I'm gonna tell you my motion. Don't raise your voice like I'm a kid. I know what I'm doing.
Alright, um, welcome, and I'd like to say hello. This is Finance Chair Kate Fields, fourth ward councilperson. I'd like to welcome you to Flint, the city council budget session.
Point of order. Point of order.
The purpose, the purpose of this session is to discuss Mayor Neary's... Mr. Mays, there is no point of order.
Point of order.
If you be quiet, you're out of order, Mr. Mays. The purpose of this session is to discuss Mayor Neary's...
I am, but point of order is always in order. Point of order. I'll peel the ruling at the tip.
This is your first warning, Mr. Mays, you are out of order.
I'm appealing the ruling.
There is no point of order or point of information.
You gotta have some order in a meeting.
I would like to, Mr. Mays, if you in this meeting, you need to be quiet until I finish reading what I'm going to read.
Listen, dog, the minute, President Galloway. This is, I ain't never seen nothing like it.
Alright, Mr. Mays, I'm so sorry to lose you so early in the meeting. Please mute Mr. Mays.
No, you can't, don't, don't mute me. I'm a Davina, we got a point of order, don't mute me.
That's right. The purpose of this session is to discuss Mayor Neary's... I'm going to say this to council one time, and anyone who keeps blurting out is going to get a warning. I would like you to allow me to finish reading what I want to read here. And you're out of order, Ms. Galloway, I think that's Ms. Galloway. If you will just have a bit of patience. Alright, you're out of order, Ms. Galloway. Davina, please remove Ms. Galloway.
You can't blur it out of order.
I, 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 I'll peel that ruling.
Davina?
And I'll stick and just appeal.
Just one second.
Davina, have you muted Mr. Mays and Ms. Galloway?
Point of order, and Ms. Winfrey Carter supported it. Ms. Fields, if you're gonna run a lawless meeting, you need to tell us how the, the proper order of this meeting is. A point of order is in order.
I'm trying to, but you're not allowing me to. You are interrupting this meeting before it's even really begun. And I was going to explain all that. But Davina, are you on the line?
Yes, I am on the unit.
Um, Ms. Winfrey Carter, you have something you wish to say?
Yes. Now, you know what? I think, and I, and, and, and you need to be fair, um, Councilwoman Fields. I think you need to, um, let Councilwoman Galloway and Councilman Mays back onto this meeting. You did not give them a fair chance. And if you're not gonna do it, I'm gonna appeal your ruling. Because based on our city council rules, a point of order is always, it is always recognized. And you ignored their point of order. And that's not right.
Are you finished? Okay, I'll respond to that. Unfortunately, neither Ms. Galloway nor Mr. Mays were willing to just even hold their comments until I could finish reading this. And I have just explained to you, I am being actually very fair. This is being held, just there are no rules for a budget finishing.
I'm gonna appeal it.
Yeah, there's no ruling. There, there is no point of order or point of information in a budget hearing.
Councilwoman Fields, a point of order. A point of order is not...
It is not covered in our council rules. Now, you are out of order, and I would like very much for you to stay
You know what?
On the line to be able to participate.
I'm off.
I'm sorry to hear that. Okay, now we'll start with Ms. Worthing. Do you have any comments? You have three minutes, Ms. Worthing.
My only comments, um, right now, and then I'll have questions later, uh, for the budget, but is, it's unfortunate that we have members that just cannot follow the rules.
This is important. It's important for the DDA. It's also important for procedure and votes, and what votes mean. Um, but at the same time, um, I don't wanna set a precedent that we... I wait till this discussion die down, 'cause I know that's your man. You ain't gonna rule him out of order. And you ain't gonna give him one warning. But for the public, well, since I got the flow, as Eva and Quincy discussing who's sitting in what seat, and it's kinda disturbing the meeting, but, you know, we got discriminatory first warnings, second warnings. I guess they got it resolved, I don't know. But I'm gonna say, for ten years of sitting on council, and twenty to thirty years of attending council meetings, I've never seen such discombobulation on folks not sitting in their designated seat. It's really rules against it, it's out of order. Let me say this. So I'm, I'mma, I'mma live my sacred, I'mma do my sacred belief. I don't care who don't agree with me. I'mma be stupid and stick with the letter of the law. I'mma stick with my belief. I've been doing it since kindergarten, and I ain't went wrong yet. I'm not gonna set a pattern of folks doing stuff in between meetings, and then you gotta make up for council people. Oh, you need to be at this meeting, we got some important stuff. We gotta fix this, we gotta, and then they vote. You have to be Boo Boo the fool to believe that. And I'm not. Thank you so much.
Anyone else in the second round?
And to do... Councilman Mays, I'm not gonna sit here all night and go back and...
Well then, let me continue making my motion uninterrupted, which the rules dictate. The rules dictate that.
What is your motion, Councilman Mays?
Thank you, we could've been here...
What is your motion, Councilman Mays?
I'm gonna tell you my motion. Don't raise your voice like I'm a kid, I know what I'm doing. I can raise my voice every time you raise yours. This is not a game. I see the Honorable Mayor Weaver came in, I'mma hear from her if we able to.
And last, a couple other things I wanna say, is that with my five minutes, I am very sorry, and I have to apologize to Mr. Newsom and to the mayor. Mr. Mays, in his eagerness to put forth his ideas, interrupted the mayor, has interrupted Mr. Newsom multiple times. Um, if he doesn't hear what he wants to hear...
Point of information.
And he's abusing...
Point of information.
What's your point, Councilman?
Why is she still talking? My point of information is if she wanna come at me, is she ready for me to come and damn near take her political head off? I do not...
Point of order.
Does she know she don't need to apologize for me?
That's not a point of information.
So it's on.
Proceed, I, I, I'm ruling.
Who she thinks she is.
I said at the beginning, if I may, I wouldn't care if the deed is transferred in two days and you were done with. It's quick claim deed. Ms. Weaver, who signs up on the deed? The mayor, the council, who signs the deed from the city? Do we know that?
Of course, it goes through this body.
That's correct.
To make sure that it's approved, and that it's at a fair market value, because this is a municipality, it has to be done transparently. It cannot be done to give favoritism to one party over another. And you know what? It's not popular, but it's the truth, and I have to tell you that.
Madam Chair. I don't appreciate you or anybody else trying to act like something gonna be done with nepotism, favoritism, or something else. We don't start with the administration saying and doing that. But if that's what's gonna be said to this council, I can assure you, it can go both ways. Now, I'm tired of the negative talk about this. What I'm concerned about is, I will probably call the special meeting. I'm concerned about getting to the nuts and bolts.
Madam Chair, we're asking that you call this meeting to order. This meeting is set for today at five o'clock.
Excuse me?
January the third.
Okay, so, um, thank you so much, Ms. Burns. Just like we gave you all the five-minute break. We started five minutes later.
That's what you wanted to do, but you didn't have a conversation.
In any event. We will wait the five minutes? And then we move on?
Madam Chair, are you calling the other committees to order? Are you going to call them to order now? The start of the business was supposed to be at five o'clock. It is now five oh nine.
This is the most dysfunctional president.
Excuse me, it's not time for audience response, sir.
It ain't time for the...
It's not time for audience response, sir.
Call it to order, and then you gonna be at the podium.
I'm just gonna protest.
Anybody can be at the podium now. You didn't call the meeting to order. You need to call the meeting to order. Residents to speak at the podium.
But everyone playing games can call it.
This is not the way to do business.
You looking bad in front of representatives, folks, ladies, people.
Alright. The time is now five ten, and the legislative committee is now being called to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Lewis?
Present.
Ms. Murphy, is that in? Ms. Speaker, is that in? Ms. Fattig, is that in?
Present.
Ms. Burns?
Present.
Ms. Pfeiffer?
Present.
Ms. Worthing, is that in?
We have four members present. So therefore, this meeting is adjourned for lack of form.
Madam Chair, are you calling the legislative to order?
I am in five minutes.
Are you on the...
You made a new rules, you made a... You made a new rules every week.
And the audience, there is no five-minute rule. It does not exist. There's no five-minute interval rule. These meetings should've been called to order. These meetings have been set, every council member knew, 'cause we had this, this, today, at the new year, our first meeting, and they are not here to do the business. It's the same individuals walked out December eighteenth, with the council president, the council vice president, and didn't do the business of the city. Again. And broke form, broke form, and then did not call the council meeting to order.
And the same guy is trying to disenfranchise me in the first place. The board is in control.
We have a full agenda, and no council members are here. The same council members walked out on December eighteen. Just wrong. Just wrong. We have a full agenda.
I wanna apologize for all the members of the public that took time out of their day to come down here. And unfortunately, we never win this conference. Every other precedent we have set in the past two years, two-plus years that we've been on this council, is we have stood at ease and waited for form every single time. But in order to stop the election with the seventh ward, they are pulling this. And going to hide this out. This is just straight corruption. Straight corruption.
That's where the media...
I personally wanna apologize that, uh, our council president is acting in complete treason.
Go back to the board.
In a hurry.
All the news we gotta do is get together, we can hit the signatures.
I'm sure.
Can we get rid of them right now?
We need, we need the signatures, we need to check, let's hit the ground. Let's hit the ground.
They were signatures.
And to prove that this is all of that, they canceled the meeting in mid-December for lack of form before. They actually, before the meeting, the week before the meeting, they canceled for lack of form. So this is a planned decision. Make sure that the seventh ward seat doesn't run out.
Seven ward needs...
Stand, Mr. Chair.
Right, you need to know that the council president and council vice president both have resolutions for fifty thousand, well, three hundred thousand of out funds to be approved. We have put in one promise, we have to put one shingle on the rug. We have done anything for residents, they said it's their resolution to be approved.
The time is now five fifteen, and the government operations committee is now being called to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Lewis?
Present.
Ms. Fattig, is that in?
Present.
Ms. Burns?
Present.
Ms. Shatner, is that in? Mr. Pfeiffer?
Present.
We have four members present?
Uh, we have four members present. Therefore, the government operations committee is adjourned for lack of form.
Y'all need to know where our...
So, unfortunately, we had...
They left me, they're taking a seat.
Unfortunately, we had council members that were ill, and then...
Just lie, just don't try by that. She won't get her fifty thousand.
Can I speak? I'm in the seventh ward, can I speak? Okay, that, this, this is what we supposed to be doing. All right, it, it can't be nothing done. The street look like shit. It's whole thing look like shit, dumped everywhere. Y'all gonna care about what's happening around here? We made our choices, we still look like that.
Ma'am, you're correct, and your seventh ward representative is not here.
I was yesterday out of town, I was heard as...
She just said she was sick, and we weren't here. No, I didn't, I, I, I just said she was sick. I said council members were sick and out of town.
The mayor said she out of town because he didn't want us to.
She just a nigga that she talk to.
It's just ordinances and things of that nature. So my position is we need to get some ethic ordinances in play. I don't want them defining what these ordinances and conflicts look like. We can do that by ordinance.
They're very clearly...
We can't, we're loseable.
Yeah. Yeah, so he needs to be a rapper.
Wrap it up.
Always wrap it up. But my point is this, when y'all start pushing me to rap, when y'all start pushing me to wrap it up. What y'all laughing at? I'm just saying, I ain't really bucked against y'all when y'all say wrap it up. But I just start talking, just 'cause she... Pretty good, but, hey, but check this out. My position is this.
That's what the contract, I have it. I just, and I wanna say, I said thank you because there was a measurement being spoken of, and you just reminded me what that measurement was. And so now the question just becomes, was it in writing, contract form? Which meant that it was binding? Or if it wasn't? And so, uh, Mr. Mays, I, I have a couple of things that, that I just wanna touch bases. Um, that's the only...
I'm the chair of finance, and I'mma take advantage of it, and I don't wanna hear y'all say a dumb wrong word.
Just for the reference, Mays, you have taken advantage of it. That's why this is...
I'm trying to make a motion to move this ad on.
And, and as soon as I, and what is your, what is your, what is your...
I said a point of order, you can move on and move on. But go ahead with your stuff, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilman Mays.
And just remember that, y'all, I don't wanna hear Kate, huh, or nobody's... Quinn ruled me out, but right now I called a point, you can rule on that point.
And I did.
Quinn, if you gonna allow for the motion on this?
After I make my discussion. You ran thirty minutes almost.
Ms. Murphy, you don't wanna start talking to me. Don't even rule on the point of order.
You don't wanna...
And then proceed with your rule.
Thank you, thank you.
That's what you do.
Uh, Mr. Newsom, with the nine million only being part of the twenty-six million, how do you...
And I'm telling you, anything I do, if I'm unethical and lose my seat in you here for ten years after me, I'm not gonna cry. I'm gonna just be on 125 East Russell and pray and club Kino in my spare time. My point is this, Ms., Ms., Ms. Murphy. You know, I listen to people out in the, in the community. People tell me, Pastor Gilbert, them saying Ethics and Accountability Board shit. I don't know what they see. But I know people tell me, they ask me, why do Quincy do like that? They ask me about you. Sure, they tell me about myself. Guess what I tell them? With that crowd...
Point of information.
Yeah.
Um, the, um, number is eight, seven, six, six, seven, four, one, eight. They can call the council office if they need to ask Quincy any kind of questions.
Mr. Murphy, do you wanna be removed from this meeting? That was not a point of information or point of order. And that's what we talking about decorum. You proving to the, um, honorable chairperson how you operate. You proving it. You proving it not only to him, hopefully, but to me, to the public. We know you talking the third person. You wanna say your name, Quincy Murphy, when I said, "Don't say my name, Quincy Murphy." I'mma talk in the first person, you talking the third. It ain't cute to me. It's time-consuming. It's a lack of understanding, it's ignorance, and he calling us ignorant. Ignorant can be polite if you'll take the time to learn.
Point of order.
Yes, what's your point?
Where are we at on this agenda?
I'mma tell you where we at. We at a spot where y'all voted to have this discussion prior to public speaking. And the majority voted 'cause they figured it was gonna be centered around me and how I act and conduct meetings as president. That's where we at. We on that unlimited discussion that y'all voted for under the goofy rules. Now, if that answers your question, where we at, then I've answered it.
Could you wrap up so we can get the business done?
I necessarily didn't wanna have it here. This is the business. How council act is the business. How you act is part of the business. Whether you attend, you know...
Point of information.
What's your point?
Could you, um, wrap up so we can get the business done?
I could. But I could've asked you to wrap up when you was talking. I could've asked Ms. Burns to wrap up. But the problem is you wanna discriminate. And when folks just openly lie, that gets under my skin. I'mma tell you, either you done forgot what you said on the record, Mr. Murphy, or you lying.
Point of information.
Yes.
I am not lying.
Well then, your brain has forgotten something.
Point of information.
What's your point?
Maybe your brain done forgot something.
Um, you should gotta put that in the form of a question. You out of order. I'm just gonna let you stay up for grace and mercy, and I think you're a little ignorant to how this thing go. Ms. Herkenroth, whoever wanted to flow, you got it. And, uh, we can take it from there. If Mr. Murphy or anybody else wanna leave, that's their business, and that's what we talking about. Be careful what you put before public speaking, 'cause it's bigger than what you thought it was. Ms. Herkenroth, you wanted to flow?
Point of order.
What's your point?
Your time is up.
Mr. Murphy, my time is up, and I'm wrapping up just like everybody else. And so what you do, you continue to show who you are, show how you act, and I'mma continue to highlight it. Now, when I tell somebody else their time is up, wrap up, I wanna see if you come with that old stale plate, point and border. Let's move on with this agenda as you continue to highlight yourself. And I'mma continue to talk about you and help you highlight yourself, because to me, some of it is, it ain't politics. I just don't know if the Lord blessed you with a brain. Well, you realize what you doing.
Point of, point of order.
What's your point?
You are attacking my character.
Now, I'm questioning you, your character.
No, you are attacking my character.
Okay, well, that ain't a point of order.
And you oughta give yourself a first warning.
Okay, well, I'm not.
Whoever he is, it be called a party, see, right now, talk. You know, they right there, man. What are you talking about? I say, if you're killing parties, you better talk to them. And whoever you hear, I got it. You can kill, shoot, and die for yourself.
Hey, 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 hey.
Whoever he is, I'mma see his...
You're in trouble, man.
Man, I've been standing in this building for thirty years, y'all talk to them. Come on, chill out. Get your hands off of me. Get your hands off of me. Talk to them. Don't make no spectacle out of me. Look at the grinning man. Just a devil, man. My hip mother. They were not putting me out of City Hall.
And, and she over there grinning and stuff right now, and stuff in what a third, third, I mean, first ward, without a, took him out of seat, and a schoolteacher put a grown senior citizen under a meat tan. Or she say, and, and never coming, and to be on absentee plan with a cell phone right now. And you, Madam President, talking that drunk and...
Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Mitchell, this is a reminder, you're out of order if you start attacking people.
Subscribe with attacking people's ears to me, lady. Hello? That's what I thought. And back to Ms. Worthing. Ain't it messing with Graybeard, 'cause he... Oh, he looking serious tonight. I better leave him alone. Look like one of them boss halls in torture. Down that, on that light-skinned part, the red bone over in Carolina. I mean, uh, he look like smoking hundred-dollar bills with that marijuana down there. Like, like, everybody don't know about that, we done legalized the stuff in, in Flint. The beat still goes on in Flint. I stopped, I just keep coming back.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Does anyone else wish to, wish to address this council?
And, uh, it's a lot going on here in Flint, Michigan. War and poverty. As I walk the streets in Flint, Michigan, Flinttown, Bear Rock, I see a lot of suffering, a lot of pain. It don't have to be the little one suffering. Mommy, daddy, I'm hungry in the middle of the night, the midnight hour. So, it got to be a change sooner or very soon, so...